For June 9, 2025, regular board meeting. And attendance, roll call.
Trustee Harvey absent. Trustee Reeves here. Trustee Gaines? Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you very much. Public comment announcement pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350. Public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or the Recording Secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the boardroom from the Recording Secretary or online. And we have no public comment cards for our closed session, so at this point, we will be adjourning to closed session. Thank you.[138.72]
What would I do without you Patty?
Roll call.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Jane, they can hear you, are you ready to cover your microphone.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, and I do have a little email I'd like to read you from our student trustee Kristi Lara. Says, "Good evening everyone, I'm sorry I'm not able to be here with you tonight. I've recently been accepted into the Certified Nursing Assistant Program that meets during the same time as our board meetings and today is our very first class session. This opportunity is an important step toward my long-term goal of becoming a nurse practitioner and continuing to serve underrepresented communities throughout healthcare. I remain committed to my responsibilities as student trustee and deeply appreciate your understanding and support as I navigate this part of my journey. Thank you Kristi Salazar Lara." Okay, Mr. Buffalo, lead us in the pledge.
Everybody stand, place your hand over your heart, begin with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands.
For one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the highest. And here a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes with four yes votes. Report of closed session action, the board was in closed session but has no reportable actions out of the closed session. Item 10, public comments. Pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or the Recording Secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table in the boardroom, from the Recording Secretary, or online. We do have some common cards, Joseph Holton.
Is this mic on now? How do I turn it on? Okay, thank you. I wasn't expecting to be called already. Okay. Good evening, my name is Joseph Holton, I am a classified worker in facilities and maintenance and a dues-paying member. First, I want to thank my directors and supervisors for their work and the efforts they make to support our team. I know these jobs come with challenges and I appreciate the work that goes into keeping everything running. That said, I've spoken with several coworkers across departments who have shared concerns about how hard it is to attend appreciation events when they're held during hours that don't align with everyone's schedule. We have hard-working people who feel unseen and underappreciated, they are often doing essential work behind the scenes at odd hours, or in ways that aren't immediately visible. It's not about asking for praise, it's about feeling like we're a part of the same campus community with the same access to recognition and inclusion. I'm not here to criticize any department or leadership, I believe the solution is simple and within reach. What I'm asking for is this, can we support department-specific efforts, something like a non-consecutive Employee of the Month Award for each department, or other rotating gestures of appreciation? This doesn't have to be formal or expensive, they just need to be consistent. A culture of recognition doesn't have to wait for a flyer or a once-a-year event, it can live in the day-to-day. That's how you build morale, that's how you keep people engaged, that's how you show solidarity with the people who keep things going behind the scenes. Inclusion isn't just for the students or staff on center stage, it matters just as much for those who sweep the floors after everyone else has gone home. Thank you.
Final report.
What would I do without you Patty? Roll call.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Jane, they can hear you, are you ready to cover your microphone.
Here.
Trustee Buffalo?
Here.
Trustee Adams?
Here.
The F Forum.
Thank you, and I do have a little email I'd like to read you from our student trustee, Kristi Lara. Says, "Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not able to be here with you tonight. I've recently been accepted into the Certified Nursing Assistant Program that meets during the same time as our board meetings and today is our very first class session. This opportunity is an important step toward my long-term goal of becoming a nurse practitioner and continuing to serve underrepresented communities throughout healthcare. I remain committed to my responsibilities as student trustee and deeply appreciate your understanding and support as I navigate this part of my journey. Thank you, Kristi Salazar Lara." Thank you. Okay, Mr. Buffalo, lead us in the pledge.
Everybody stand, place your hand over your heart, begin with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, for one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever to be revealed.
And here, a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. Report of closed session action. The board was in closed session but has no reportable actions out of the closed session. Item 10, public comments. Pursuant to Board Policy Number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or the Recording Secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table in the boardroom, from the Recording Secretary, or online. We do have some comment cards. Joseph Holton.
Is this mic on now? How do I turn it on? Okay. Thank you. Said I wasn't expecting to be called already. Okay. Good evening, my name is Joseph Holton. I am a classified worker in facilities and maintenance and a dues-paying member. First, I want to thank my directors and supervisors for their work and the efforts they make to support our team. I know these jobs come with challenges and I appreciate the work that goes into keeping everything running. That said, I've spoken with several coworkers across departments who have shared concerns about how hard it is to attend appreciation events when they're held during hours that don't align with everyone's schedule. We have hard-working people who feel unseen and underappreciated. They are often doing essential work behind the scenes at odd hours, or in ways that aren't immediately visible. It's not about asking for praise, it's about feeling like we're a part of the same campus community with the same access to recognition and inclusion. I'm not here to criticize any department or leadership, I believe the solution is simple and within reach. What I'm asking for is this: Can we support department-specific efforts, something like a non-consecutive Employee of the Month Award for each department, or other rotating gestures of appreciation? This doesn't have to be formal or expensive, they just need to be consistent. A culture of recognition doesn't have to wait for a flyer or a once-a-year event. It can live in the day-to-day. That's how you build morale. That's how you keep people engaged. That's how you show solidarity with the people who keep things going behind the scenes. Inclusion isn't just for the students or staff on center stage, it matters just as much for those who sweep the floors after everyone else has gone home. Thank you.
I had convinced myself that I didn't feel that it does any good to come up here and speak to the board. And then I found this letter as I was doing some cleaning. And this is from a board member. And it's dated June 12, 2003. "A number of your points I agree," it is to an employee. "A number of your points I agree wholeheartedly with, such as we have our areas of expertise and working together. We can get through these very difficult times. I have adopted the shared governance concept, as I agree a college is quite different from the business world, even though we all have to answer to budget and financial reality. Beyond that, I also feel that when we bring new classified personnel, teachers or administrators on board, they should be allowed to flower within their respective positions with as little dictate as possible from above. I know that all of us, like our independence, an ability to pass on both our educational and practical experience to those students who are here to prepare for the life ahead of them. As the administration, Board of Trustees, respect your positions and responsibilities, I would expect similar respect from the other factions on campus. Regarding the reorganization, I feel sufficient time was allowed for everyone to add their opinions to the draft. And now it should be left up to the President to make the final decision after taking those suggestions under consideration. That is what he is paid to do, and it is spelled out accordingly in our policy. Change is seldom welcome or easily accepted. But the President was hired to institute changes, and some of which may not be popular but are in the best interest of the college. For the same reasons you're all judged by your performance, I will, as trustee, do likewise for the President. He has the professional and educational experience to manage the college, and I for one intend to support him until his performance proves otherwise. I have publicly offered to meet with any individual or any group to discuss the business of the college in an attempt to create one of the finest community colleges in the state. And I repeat it here: Am I open to honest discussion? Yes. Am I willing to listen sincerely to a difference of opinion from my own? Yes. My office phone number is: If I am willing to publicly express my views, which may differ from yours, I would expect the same of you, from any of you. Have a great day, and let's all of us live and grow together. Sincerely, Board of Trustee Member." And this is what we've gotten away from, but this is what made us work.
Thank you, Joseph Holton. Jason, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Zallett, Mr. Taylor, and Ms. Schottelkorb. I was a sole faculty supervisor for five students at a UCLA tour, May 16. Nestor Flores was one of the five. He's a STEM Club officer, and he was responsible for organizing the trip. He's a student, and he made several attempts prior to schedule a trip for the STEM Club students. His first attempt was a massive undertaking, it didn't work out, but, you know, he wanted to tour UC Berkeley, and that required a flight to San Francisco. So, you know, there was a lot of logistics involved in that. It didn't work out, but after a lengthy discussion that he and I had, he decided that a trip to UCLA would be more practical, and this was rather last minute. So this was a last-minute pivot, and he took on quite a lot. He took on quite a bit initially, trying to get to Berkeley for a tour, and then even in pivoting, he still took on quite a bit. So UCLA was more practical. So he persisted with ensuring the enormous amount of paperwork would be filed, and truth be told, it worked out because of the magic of Patty McClure. And then the Board of Trustees on May 12 approved the trip for May 16, and I drove the van. It was an adventure of a lifetime. Finding parking at UCLA was the adventure. We had confirmation of parking, however, when we arrived, all of a sudden, we didn't have it. So, we had significant trouble, ventured into a parking garage at the direction of UCLA officials, where we only had inches of clearance. So, I had never been in that circumstance before, but let me tell you, that's very scary. So, we only had inches of clearance, so we quickly cleared out of there. There was some discouragement and discussion of solutions. We parked, and I called President Zallett, Vice President Kathy Baquet, because I didn't know what to do. Vice President Baquet contacted Vice President Adanya Reyes, because one solution was, I would leave them, go park at Starbucks, get some work done, come back and pick them up, but I was told fairly quickly, no, don't do that. So, but, you know, there was immediate effort to try to solve that problem, and we wanted to make the trip happen because of all of the sacrifices that had been made by Nestor, by the cashier's office, by Patty McClure. There were many individuals involved in trying to make this trip work. So, we had parked the van, we tried to solve it, I was told I couldn't leave the students, so we started driving again, and then we found parking miraculously on the east side of the college. So, we parked, and then we just had a really great trip. So we toured the physics department, mathematics department, we toured the law school, we took pictures at the Student Center in front of the bear statue, and, as a bonus, we ran into several of our own AVC graduates who have accepted admission to UCLA, about five of them. What an amazing trip. I'd like to thank Nestor for his sacrifices and perseverance, and Patty, who was amazing and gave up some of her weekend to make sure that that trip happened. Nestor experienced lessons all students should experience, lessons about maintaining hope and vigilance. Even I had a moment of solidarity with administration, if you could believe that. You know, my hope is that this is the start of amazing things to come, because it was, you know, for me personally, having this need to call President Zallett, having the need to call Kathy Baquet, and actually lean on administrators, because I knew that they'd have answers to my questions, that was a nice change of pace for once. And so my hope is that that tiny little bit, that grain of sand, that small seed that can start something big, that's what I'm hoping this does. But in any case, it was a wonderful trip, and I'm looking forward to more experiences like this.
Thank you. And let me say that I'm unsurprised that after 50 years, UCLA parking is still lousy. Mae Sanikolas?
Hello. Hello, AVC Board of Trustees. My name is Mae Sanikolas. I am a counselor and one of the Amosha counselors. There's a handful of us that do meet with the 270 or so Amosha students on a regular basis throughout the academic year. I'm mainly here to inform about some unfortunate events that have occurred over the last few months, and those essentially are the Amosha SLI that the program, faculty, and staff should have been afforded to go to. I don't know how many folks are actually going, but just to let you know that there has been such a lack of communication about the Amosha SLI, not on the coordinator's part. Professor VJ Jennings and Crystal Ibrahim have been really great at coordinating and doing their job and gathering names of folks who were interested in going, so that we may continue to do this work. As of this year, I would be out of compliance to be an Amosha counselor, because it's been three or four years since I've last attended the SLI, the Summer Learning Institute. So on March 26, Professor Jennings sent an email asking who was interested in going. I replied after spring break, which was the second week of April. On May 12 and 13, there was an exchange of non-updates, that there has been no word and no responses from administrators about our attendance to SLI, which was scheduled to occur next week, or this week actually, June 10, 11, and 12, I believe. And then May 19 was the deadline for us to submit our paperwork and our payment to attend. After that, May 27 through 30, I had a series of texts between myself and Alberto, who is the hub manager, about who's going. Like, I would like to attend, I would still like to attend, only to find out that those who were invited to attend were emailed, but those who were on the list that desired to go were never informed that they were not going to attend. And so this is just very frustrating, because even as far as I know, as of today, there are no Amosha coordinators for the '25-'26 academic year. Even when the coordinators announced their departure at the beginning of the spring semester, back in February, and also knowing that administrators were well-aware, long before February, that their departure was on the horizon. And so how is it that after a full academic year, there are still no Amosha coordinators? Who are we supposed to refer our students to? Who's taking care of this program? This does not serve our AVC community. This does not serve our Black and African-American population. I just am so confused about what exactly we're doing. And that compounded with things that were brought up at the last Academic Senate meeting about the Pride Center not receiving the programming that they so deserve and that there is funding for. I don't understand where exactly the funding is going, and why we don't have the programming and the support for the students that we have said we are going to serve. Thank you.
I would ask the President to update the board on this subject in the future meeting. Item 11, Presentations. 11.1, Rising Scholars Program, and I have a card on that one. Dr. Dale Lindrum. After? Me, after. Okay.
Thank you to the board, trustee President Adams, President Zallett, Director McClure, Director Schottelkorb, colleagues, students, and community. I join you this evening as faculty co-chair of our Rising Scholars Program. Since 2016, AVC has partnered with the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation to offer high-quality, higher education to individuals who are incarcerated. And in 2018, Antelope Valley College was awarded the Rising Scholars Grant to amplify the impact of our prison education program while expanding our efforts to support those re-entering society. When I last reported to you, the college had not yet met a number of key objectives outlined in both our first and second rounds of grant funding, designed to help us achieve core outcomes required for our use of these funds, most importantly, quote, "parody of academic services with students on campus, including but not limited to counseling, advising, tutoring, or other academic support, and research and library services." I'm grateful to report that a lot of positive progress has been made, and can become concrete and lasting with the support of AVC's elected and executive leadership. As long as we have the concerted will to follow through on this investment in our community, we are in a position to reach several key milestones which will improve student retention, success, and graduation rates. To help us understand and make the best decisions moving forward, I'd like to summarize action taken this spring. The Rising Scholars Work Group preempted an official advisory committee, officially convened this past February, and held bi-weekly meetings throughout spring. First, thanks to the efforts of Professors Tina McDermott, Dr. Dale Lindrum, and Maria Espinoza-Strzok, we developed the outline of contents for our much-needed student handbook. You can imagine how something that may typically seem like a very simple resource is incredibly vital in a carceral setting. We developed and distributed a Rising Scholars Faculty Survey to gather data to better improve support for instructors engaged in this rewarding but challenging work. We produced a successful faculty professional development event, hosting our first Rising Scholars Faculty Roundtable, which was well-attended and well-received despite being a late-planned event during one of the busiest times of the semester. We represented AVC at the Second Annual Prison Graduation Initiative convening at California State University, Los Angeles. We planned and promoted the first official Rising Scholars Faculty Training, which will take place this August 1st onsite at the Lancaster State Prison. In collaboration with CDCR education staff, we developed plans to begin implementing regular counseling, librarian research, tutoring, and other vital support services. To be clear, we are obligated to do everything we can to emulate, if not replicate, the full college experience for this population, not to merely offer classes toward degrees. We developed plans to facilitate a recurring Rising Scholars Faculty Forum, supporting the network's mandate to, quote, "safeguard academic freedom by ensuring that the college and college faculty determine curriculum, course content, academic progression, and course selection." As we are also charged to uphold the academic freedom and shared governance rights of our students, we outlined plans to publish an annual forum of student voices along with required yearly updates to their handbook. We established plans to develop a new cross-listed course between History and Communication Studies, the two associate's degrees we offer in the prison, to help not only expedite graduation rates, but also increase total number of degree attainments. In addition to much more than our allotted time can cover today, we promoted the Rising Scholars Program across and beyond the college persistently and fervently, motivated by the urgency to serve these students and the community better. On May 1, the Office of the Vice Chancellor announced AVC as one of the intended recipients of the next round of Rising Scholars Grant Funding. In 2021, as a recipient of the separate Rising Scholars Equity and Curriculum Grant, I spent two and a half years traveling up and down the state, facilitating trainings, delivering presentations, and conducting research at the Directive of the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. I had the opportunity to directly observe how different programs of all shapes and sizes serve justice-impacted students all across our state. AVC is not simply part of a network. We have taken it upon ourselves to be part of a movement to transform the landscape of higher education. Simply having an advisory committee will not replace the need for dedicated support staff who should not continue to have their work regularly redirected to other areas. Or the need for counseling services to invest in having a reliable, weekly presence at the prison. Or the requirement to reassign faculty time in support of all these efforts and more. Many support this work for much more than the clear economic benefits, but from a place of moral conviction rooted in a deep faith in the power of transformation and opportunity. Working together and with our community, we have the opportunity to transform this program and justice-impacted lives throughout the Antelope Valley. Thank you for your support. I look forward to updating you more on these efforts soon.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Dale Lindrum.
Thank you, Dr. Langner, for your tireless work and your passion and dedication to the cause. Man, it was 70 degrees when I left Rhea this afternoon, what happened? Good evening, President Zallett, distinguished trustees, and members of the public. My name is Dr. Dale Lindrum, and I am an adjunct professor here at AVC, where I have the privilege of teaching Communication Studies to our Rising Scholars at California State Prison, Los Angeles County. I'm also formerly incarcerated, having spent half of my 61 years entangled in the revolving door of the jail system and the prison industrial complex. I have been jailed 28 times, I have been imprisoned six times, and I've been branded with two strikes in the state of California. So when I speak about the challenges our Rising Scholars and Focus 180 students face, I speak not only as an educator, but someone with lived experience. Tonight, I rise with deep concern about the commodification of our- Tonight, I rise with deep concern about the commodification of our Rising Scholars and Focus 180 students, and how this runs counter to the values embedded in our institutional commitment to serves. We say we value service, yet who are we serving when the basic needs of our Rising Scholars and Focus 180 students go unmet? We say we value equity, but when students are reduced to statistics or treated as funding metrics, rather than full human beings, we fail that promise. True equity isn't performative. It requires care, dignity, and agency. We say we provide resources, but are we equipping our systems-impacted students with the same tools, advising, and access as their non-impacted peers? Or are we leaving them to navigate barriers we claim to be removing? Vision requires more than expansion, it demands intentionality. And I fear we are prioritizing optics over outcomes, growth without substance, presence without support. These students aren't success stories for someone else's resume. They are people, they are human beings, who are trying to rewrite their own stories. We say we believe in education, but let us ask, who gets a real shot at it, and who are we excluding from our inclusivity? When we talk about success, it must be more than degree completion. For someone on a Level 4 prison yard, success might simply be finding their voice in a persuasive speech, or finally believing they're more than the worst thing they've ever done. This isn't data on a dashboard, that's transformation. If we are to truly serve, we must reject practices that tokenize, exploit, or silence. We must build systems that center our students' voices, honor their lived experience, and dismantle the structures, both inside and outside our college, that continue to define them by their past. Many of our Rising Scholars and Focus 180 students were failed by education the first time around. When they show up now, courageously, vulnerably, they are trusting us not to fail them again. Sadly, too many tell me that they feel like that's exactly what is happening. Lastly, and I must say this with a heavy heart, I do not appreciate my colleagues and I being bullied or threatened, told our work may be taken away if we do not lower academic standards to boost retention or graduation rates. That is not how justice-centered education works. I urge this board to ensure our policies, practices, and messaging align with our professed values. I ask that you let us ensure our Rising Scholars and Focus 180 students are not just served, but seen, heard, and respected as equal members of the college and academic community. Lastly, I did not come here to chastise, but to challenge the college to rise up and meet the commitment, to match our rhetoric with our service. I thank you for your time, I thank you for the good work you have done, I thank you for the good work you are doing, and I thank you for the good work that you will do in the future.
Presentation 11.2, Annual Report of the Retirement Board of Authority, RBOA.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zellet, colleagues, members of the public. I'm Vice President of Administrative Services, Shami Brar, and with me are Rosalind Washington from Keenan Financial Services, Scott Rankin from Benefit Trust Company, and Mark Payne from Morgan Stanley, and they'll be presenting the RBOA Annual Report.
Thank you, Shami. Hopefully, I can click this correctly. Again, my name is Rosalind Washington, I'm with Keenan Financial Services, and I'd like to introduce my colleagues today. This is Scott Rankin, he's with Benefit Trust Company, they're the discretionary trustee for the Futuris, which is the OPEB plan, and then this is Mark Payne, he's with Morgan Stanley. For those of you that don't know, I'll give a little bit of a history on the OPEB trust. OPEV is an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits, meaning everything outside of pension. So our team, in 2015, the district did a national RFP and requested to have OPEV services, and Keenan Financial Services is the vendor that won that bid. So we've been partnered with Morgan Stanley and with Benefit Trust for the last 20-some-odd years, and we've been overseeing your trust account since 2015. The Retirement Board of Authority members, the RBOA, excuse me, is a select group of members that this governing board selected to be an oversight board. The members of this Board of Authority are here based on their title and their affiliation. So I'd like to thank Michael Adams personally, Shamin Brar, and Tamara Steffes for being on the Board of Authority. I think Michael's been on the board since day one, so it's nice to see you every time. Here are a few of the responsibilities of the Retirement Board of Authority. They provide a high level of oversight of the program. We meet with them twice a year, give them an update on what the actual trust is doing, as well as what the market is doing, anything that goes down in the market. We have our experts here that will give an update twice a year to the board. The RBOA also adopts and executes the terms of the trust. We did that initially when we adopted the program. The Investment Policy Statement is a document that basically states what your asset allocation is, what your mix is, bonds versus stocks. It's the RBOA team that also makes that decision, and we present that to the RBOA on an annual basis. The meetings that we have are Brown Act meetings, so they're open to the public. The RBOA documents due process, provides local control, and it mitigates liability for the district and the Retirement Board of Authority having our team here as the prudent experts. This is our team. Again, my name is Rosalind Washington, I've been on this team since day one for the past 20 years, since the inception of our program. My mentor is Gail Beal, she is the program manager of the entire program. Scott Rankin is the discretionary trustee, he's Senior Vice President with Benefit Trust Company out of Overland Park, Kansas. He as well has been on this team for the, since the inception of the program. And then we have Mark Payne, which is the investment consultant to Benefit Trust Company that handles the investments, as well as the committee with the ATC Investment Committee. So I'm going to hand this over to Scott and let him go through the numbers.
Thank you, Roz. This is a snapshot of the calendar year 2024. You'll see that you ended the year at $9,467,801.87. Throughout the course of the year, you made contributions slightly in excess of $387,000. You did have a slightly negative change in market value for the calendar year. The portfolio was moved to almost an entirely fixed income portfolio in 2021, once the realization was made that the trust had achieved full funding status through that year's actuarial report. So mostly what you see here in terms of earnings are the dividends that are basically paid, the cash dividends that are paid on those bonds. And you'll see our portfolio fees in that slide as well. Next slide. This is basically time-weighted return net of fees for the calendar year 2024. You'll see that for that year, the 12 months ending 12/31/2024, the trust had earned 3.13% and had an annualized return since 2015 of 4.28% per year. And then down below, you'll see the different asset categories that we invest in in the program, both from the calendar year '24, as well as annualized back to the inception date of the trust. What am I pointing at? Oh, there we go. Okay. So this slide is basically the performance report, the performance summary as of April 30th, 2025. May performance has not been issued yet. In the upper right-hand corner, you'll see that you begin, you began the year of 2025 with a market value of $10,144,892.18. So far through the year, you've accumulated dividends in the amount of a little over $123,000, as well as market appreciation of $152,000, and management fees coming out of the trust at a little over $29,000, ending at 4/30 at a market value of $10,391,041.50. If you'd like to jot down today's value, today's value of the trust is $10,393,897.83. Over in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a graphic of your asset allocation. As Roz mentioned, the Investment Policy Statement is reviewed on an annual basis. The investment allocation is part of that work that we do, and the decision was made by your retirement board back in 2021, once the trust became fully funded, to scale back significantly on the equity exposure in order to preserve the trust from short-term volatility. So you'll see you're basically looking at approximately 15% equities and 84% fixed income. The alternatives that you see on that graphic represent real estate investment trusts, and because real estate investment trusts are in equity ownership in real estate, we add that number to the equity number to achieve your 15% goal. Then down below, you'll see performance over a number of timeframes, year-to-date. You'll see total account net of fees, it's the second gray line going across the middle of the chart. Year-to-date, your performance is at 2.43%. Last 12 months, 7.88%. Last three years, an average of 2.3% per year, 2.5% per year. Last five years, an average of 5.44% per year. And inception-to-date, which takes us back to July 31st of 2015, an average of 4.39% per year. I'd also like to draw your attention to the current yield column on the far-left side of this graphic. Your current, your current portfolio is, is bringing us a current yield of approximately 3.8% per year, and with your market value, that is basically about a $500,000 plus in terms of dividend and cash income throughout the year, just based on the portfolio, and notwithstanding additional capital appreciation that we might experience. I'm going to turn it over now to Mark to talk a little bit about the benchmarks you'll see on the bottom part of that graph, as well as the markets.
All right. Thank you, Scott. I'll just go down the year-to-date column and look at a few of these. You can see year-to-date on the S&amp;P down 4.93. Obviously, the month of April was rough for the market, the S&amp;P dropped about 20%. Then in the blink of an eye, it's coming back, and it's actually slightly positive for the year now. Seems pretty amazing after the April that we just went through. Next is the International Index, this is EFE. You can see year-to-date up 12, that's actually up closer to 19 this year. That's one of the big rotations that we're seeing in the market this year, is the market rotating from U.S. stocks, and international is outperforming, and that's a good welcome sign after the U.S. has been outperforming for such a long period of time. Next is the ACQXUS, this is a broad all-country world index, XUS, every stock in the world outside the U.S., year-to-date up 9.01. Next is Fixed Income, Bloomberg Aggregate, this is all government bonds and investment-grade corporates, there's no munis, no high yield in here. You can see year-to-date up 3.18. Next is Bloomberg Global Ag, same thing, just global bonds, year-to-date up 5.65. Last is just a 50-50 portfolio of indexes to show you what that would look like, year-to-date up 1.42.
All right. So just want to give an update on our 2023-24 investment trust audit. The audited trust of the irrevocable trust was about $9.5 million. The auditing firm reviewed the investment valuation using the actuarial valuation study along with other budgetary information that they received from your, from the district itself. There were no audit findings or recommendation from the auditors. So some of our accomplishments this fiscal year, or the close of last fiscal year, where we reviewed the Investment Policy Statement to be in compliance with the BTCH trust agreement, as well as GASB 7475. There was a written summary that Keenan provides, which is called our Substantive Plan, so that's information that we update on an annual basis. Typically, about the second week of July, you'll receive a questionnaire. And the service that Keenan provides is we collect all of the data pertaining to the actual retiree health benefits, not so much the active employees, but the retiree health benefits. So, and we house that in a flash drive or in a portal link, and then we update that on an annual basis. So any changes, if you move, if the district moves from Blue Cross to Kaiser, if they no longer implement dental, or if they add a benefit, or even when the collective bargaining agreements are updated, that's information that we work directly with the district, with Shami and his team, and then they provide that information to us, and we send that over to you annually, and it's a really resourceful tool for you to use when you're going through your auditing phase. Some of the goals and objectives for this fiscal year, we continue to have Keenan provide the written summary of the substantive plan, evaluate and assess the district's ability to maintain the fully-funded OPEV trust. With that, the district completes what's called an actuarial valuation study. The actuary takes information based on healthcare costs and other information, mortality tables that they use, information on your actual retirees that are under this plan, and then they give you a number. And I can just say by, just by the district implementing an OPEV trust, probably saved you about $8 million of your original total liability. So that was a really good thing, a good decision the district made here. And that's it. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Number one, you said we saved $8 million. How did we save $8 million?
Well, when you don't have a trust, an OPEV trust established, basically the information, the actuary can use any number, but when you have a trust established, they use what's called a discount rate. So that discount rate kind of lowers the liability, and it's based on the impending number over the course of a year, of, I'm sorry, 20 years or so, of you being able to pay down that liability or pay those retiree health benefits by having it in a trust. So they use that information. Scott works directly with the auditors as well. So if you have it in a trust, and it's, that trust is set up to earn about 4%, depending on how your assets are allocated, then they use that number.
Okay. I brought this up last time you gave a report, and I, and I really believe it now. Why don't you, these investments are not insured by the federal government, are they?
Yeah, so you have, on the fixed income side, you have a number of different mutual funds. You have one, Community Capital, that is mainly just U.S. Treasuries, so same thing as FDIC insured. It's not FDIC insured, but it's backed by the full faith and credit of the U.S. government. Then we also have corporate bonds in the portfolio where you can earn a little bit extra, so you're not loaning to a bank or the U.S. government, you're loaning to a Apple, Microsoft, Amazon, those type of companies, and you can earn a little bit more interest by doing that.
Okay. What's wrong with, since the interest rate is about 5% right now, and some of these investments are less than 5%?
Yep.
What's wrong with investing in Treasury notes and CDs with 5% guaranteed and insured? What's wrong with that?
Yeah, so it's the time horizon. So if you invest in a one-year or a two-year CD, that's FDIC insured and 5%, when interest rates go down and the time horizon is a longer term for this portfolio, when the Fed lowers interest rates, those CDs mature more quickly, and then you're down into a lower interest-rate environment. So the mutual fund that you have that has the U.S. Treasuries, they're more like five- and six-year duration U.S. Treasuries, so you're locking in this yield for a longer period of time. The downside of that is it moves up and down a little bit more, so that's why you can see the valuation move up and down, but over a longer period of time, you'll make more money by investing in those longer-term fixed income.
So what's better, making more money or having saved money?
The default rate for corporate, high-investment-grade corporate bonds is very, very, very low, and then obviously in the U.S. Treasuries, it's zero.
Okay. One more question. Annual contributions, $387,000. Where did that come from?
That's the amount that's been determined based on the Retirement Board of Authority, your budget, that's the amount that we've been receiving for the past 10 years on an annual basis.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for answering.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions or comments with the board? Excellent job. One of the best committees I've got. Okay, 11.3 presentation of the 2025 2026 tentative budget.
Good evening again, Board of Trustees, President Zelik, colleagues and members of the public. I am presenting the 25 26 tentative budget. The topics discussed in this presentation are going to be the state budget process, the timeline, reporting deadlines. We'll go through the governor's May revision highlights from there. We'll discuss the student centered funding formula. Then the 24 25 estimated actuals, budget assumptions, and finally, the tentative budget. Shown here is an illustration of the state budget process. We're in June, and at this time, the governor's office is likely working alongside legislative leaders to address and resolve any outstanding issues and differences to finalize the budget by the June 15 deadline. Our local ABC budget timeline, budget development timeline is shown here. Budget development locally typically starts around April, May, when we meet with fund managers, departmental leaders. We continue analysis and communication through May. In June, where we are currently, we present the tentative budget. July and August, we focus on closing the books. We have additional information from the enacted state budget. And in August and September, we finalize the budget report and then present the adopted budget along with the unaudited actuals. Throughout the year, we continue to monitor information and get information. But this is the actual budget development timeline. Financial reporting deadlines, the standard financial reporting deadlines are in effect. We're going to submit the county, but we're going to submit the tentative budget here, submit it to the county officer. September 15th, we'll have the final adopted budget made public. And by December 31st, we will submit an audit report to the chancellor's office. Highlights from the May revise include some of the following. The overall state budget is lower than projected in in the January proposed budget, but still higher than the prior year. The state budget includes reduced revenue projections due in large part to instability and tariffs. The proposal includes program reductions and deferrals. The May revision projects 114.6 billion for Prop 98 in total. For community colleges, 210.1 million is allocated to fully fund the SCIF in the current year one time. 104.7 million to fully fund it in 25 26 again one time. 311 million one time is allocated towards the 24 25 deferral repayment. And the budget, the the May revise includes a proposal that defers 531 million from 25 26 to 26 27. The proposal. The proposal allocates about 217.5 million for a 2.3% COLA to community college, community college apportionments, and 27.7 million for COLA and adjustments to categorical programs. The May revision removes one time funding for the statewide technology transformation and reduces proposed investments for a system wide common data platform. The revised budget includes 68.5 million in capital outlay from Proposition 51 and 2 for continuing capital outlay projects, one of which is our ABC gym replacement project, which allocates 24.6 million for that project there. Shown here are additional details and changes from the governor's proposed budget in January. The slide shows programs saving COLA and the associated changes. Again, the common cloud platform is reduced by 121.5 million to 12 million. And credit for prior learning and the development of the career passport are reduced from 93 million to 40 million. Shown here are the allocation and rates for the various unit categories and district size categories. The proposed 25 26 rates have been adjusted by the 2.3% COLA shown on the right there. Shown here is a student centered funding formula, which calculates apportionments using three allocations. 70% is based on FTES, supplemental allocation is 20%. And student success allocation makes up the remaining 10%. Starting in 25 26, our prior funding floor will be replaced by the 24 25 SCIF calculated total computational revenue. So we will have a new funding floor in 25 26 based on 24 25. And that was that was what drove the large push to increase FTES. We're very happy with what we've achieved. I think there'll be more reports coming on our FTES, but 10,700 is what we were projecting at P2, which is a great number. We've come a long way since the lows of the pandemic there. Finally, unrestricted 24 25 unrestricted estimated actuals. We had a beginning fund balance of 69.8 million, total revenue of 110.2 million. Expenditures are expected to be 100.1 million, resulting in a projected surplus this year of 10.2 million. After assignments, the unassigned ending fund balance is 38.0 million, which represents a reserve of 38.3%. For the overall general fund, which includes unrestricted and restricted revenue totals 170.4 million and shows state revenue totaling 84% of that, federal revenue 5% and local revenue 11%. General fund expenditures in 24 25 total 127.7 million. The category breakdown is shown in the slide there. For 24 25, for all funds, revenues totaled 301.5 million and expenditures are projected to be 236.5 million, resulting in a surplus of 65 million. That surplus is due in large part to the revenue, the bond construction funds shown there with the 24.6 million dollar surplus in addition to the restricted funds. Moving on to the 25 26 budget assumptions and 25 20 SCIF, 25 26 SCIF funding is based on prior year stability, which is prior year total computational revenue plus COLA. The COLA is 2.3%. FTES were projected to remain flat at 10,765.16. There is a projected TCR deficit of 3%. Expenditure budget assumes that vacancies will be filled. Step in column increases are budgeted. An increase in CalPERS and inflationary increases for supplies and services are all included in this tentative budget report. Based on those assumptions, 25 26 projected beginning fund balance is 79.9 million. Unrestricted revenues total 112.5 million. Unrestricted expenditures are projected to be 112.4 million, leaving an ending fund balance of 84 million. After assignments, the unassigned ending fund balance is 34.8 million, which represents a reserve of 34.8%. For the combined general fund revenues in 25 26, the projected total revenue is 173.0 million, of which state revenue makes up 86%, federal 3%, local 11%. For general fund expenditures, expenditures total 173 million. The percentage breakdown again is shown on the slide there between the various categories. In the 25 26 tentative budget for all funds, revenues total 256.2 million. Expenditures are budgeted to be 308.6 million, resulting in a deficit of 52.5 million due primarily to measure AV funds being expended, shown under the Fund 42 line on that slide. Finally, closing thoughts. The outlook for fiscal year 25 26 is concerning at the state level, but it's strong locally. Our reserves put us in a great position to handle short term instability. Our ending fund balance is strong, but not strong enough to sustain the organization for more than approximately six months. There is an uncertain economic outlook due in large part to federal actions. On a positive note, we're seeing improvement in enrollment in FTES. Our FTES again are are now at 10,765, an increase of over 826 over fiscal year 23 24. That's the tentative budget presentation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
I can.
Shami, did I hear you say that there was a certain amount set aside for the gym? Or did I misinterpret that?
There is, there is an allocation from the state because of Prop 2 that the state, we applied for state funding. So it's a partially partial state funded project. 24 million was allocated from the state for us as part of the May revise. Now enacted at the enacted budget, we'll know for certain if that's awarded to us or not.
And how much short would that would that amount be to build the new gym?
We would assume, I would assume anywhere from 25 to to 35 million additional would be needed.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions for you. And I'm going to ask them now instead of later when we have to approve the vote on the budget. I'll go ahead and answer. First of all.
So I'm going to grab my, if you're okay, I'm going to grab my computer. I'm assuming you're going to ask on the report, right?
Yeah, I am. Okay, on page 18, it lists all the processes that you go through to develop this to the end to where it's submitted to the state. Someday I would like, it would have to be a change of board policy and everything. I'd like open hearings in this room on the budget like they have in Congress. I just wanted to make that comment to you. I have a whole bunch of items here for you. One question, Mr. Vice President. And I've mentioned this to President Zelik. Is it, and you say we have reserves for six months in case something happens. We can keep going for six months. Is it possible to give us a budget, a bare bones budget? It just has classified as teaching staff, keeps the lights on, bare bones budget. Is it possible you can pull items out of that and give us a bare bones budget?
I think.
Sir, if you don't mind me answering, the board has presented us with some growth goals for both FTES and enrollments. And so presenting a bare bones budget would not allow any attainment of any growth at all whatsoever. Not to mention bare bones. When you say just keep the lights on and employees, there are many other elements to running a college this size and remote sites as well. And so I I would be curious, from your perspective, what the purpose of a bare bones budget would be since we are looking at chasing some growth?
Well, what I mean is because of the volatility of the market, state budget, federal government, everything. If it comes down to keeping the lights on and having all these different programs and things that we do on the side, even though they're funded by the state. They provide revenues for us. I understand that. But if it gets down to where we just have to pay people, keep the lights on, keep the school going, what is that going to be?
So trustee Reeves, for most, most of our operating expenses are people related expenses, right? And so we have a commitment to our campus community. So all of our, all of our commitments, I mean, it's all critical services, right? Everybody employed is critical here to do the mission of the college, what you all task us to do. So 83% of our unrestricted general fund goes towards salaries and related benefits. Everything else, I mean, you're talking about utilities, supplies. It's really just a fraction of that. And all of it's critical, really. So we're in a good place. We, we, you know, we've acted, we've been physically responsible throughout the years. We're really in a good position. We're probably in one of the best positions that that institutions can be in. And so we are operating very cautiously. I would say that is bare bones because we have to meet the commitments that that we've made and the obligations that that we entered into.
Well, I commend you and the president of a college for your work on the budget.
Thank you.
But the state in this country is not in good state, in good shape.
That is correct.
Fiscal in good shape.
Yep.
And sooner or later, you know, it's going to come down. We'll have to make some hard decisions, you know, when the state is $12 billion in debt.
Right.
And so forth. Anyway, I have some more questions for you.
Sure.
We spent estimated in 2024 to 25, we spent $5,800,000 with consultants. And under the new budget, we're going to spend $10 million, almost double that for consultants. Is that true? That's on page 33.
Page 33?
At the top. We're going to double the amount of money we spend on consultant. And we spend $3 million on dues and memberships. And that's going to go up $1 million next year. All on page 33 at the top.
So consultants are included on there. Part of the consultants are contracted services, right? So it's 5100 is an object code. And all of our IT services, we're expecting a phone upgrade. That's going to be over $1 million. That's probably going to take a chunk of that. We, we are, we have included additional expenses for some of our contracted services. A lot of it is related to ITS. Some of it is for legal fees and and other fees. But we have significant implementations that are coming. HNAV, right, and and Associated Degree Works. All of those are going to require large investments by the college. So that's where we've included those expenditures in addition to other upgrades to Banner and other systems.
On page 45.
Okay.
Okay, you know, it says that we get revenue from the bonds, AV bonds.
Right.
And it's used for salaries. Is the revenue from the bonds supposed to be used for salaries or building buildings?
It is used for support salaries that are related to the bond measures. So those people and facilities that are serving just the bond related projects, what it cannot be used for is administrator salaries. And no administrators are being paid out of that. But the support staff that that ensures that we can spend those bond funds and complete our projects, that is an allowable expense and we do code salaries to those for that purpose.
Okay, on page 46. It lists 43,959,000. This is on page 46. $43,959,000 for the commons, the building we're going to build. And then on the measure, AV budget expenditure. the building we're gonna build, and then on the measure, AV budget expenditure report, it says $49 million.
So, yeah-
And then on the other side of it, it says $53 million.
So that's by, by fiscal year, right? So in '24, '25, for the Commons, we're showing 6.2 million dollars being expended, and fiscal year '25, '26, we're showing 43.9 million being expended. Total project cost is, is I believe roughly, you're right, 53 million.
But you can understand my concern when I see the figures-
Yeah, sure.
-in three different places.
It's hitting in different fiscal years, but yeah.
Okay, let's see. Okay, on page 47, page 47.
Yep.
It says that we spend $20 million to pay interest on the bonds, $20 million, is that correct?
So we ourselves, we, the district, ABC, does not expend those dollars. This is, what we're doing here is recording information that the county is giving us. So the county reported that $20 million came in in revenue from property taxes, and then 20, $20,175,000 is projected to come in in '25, '26.
It comes from property taxes to pay interest on the bonds.
And then the, and then the county pays down the principal and pays the debt service.
But the bonds are usually 30-year bonds, and most of the time they're refinanced, but if a bond is 30 years and we're paying $20 million a year on it, that means we're paying $600 million in interest.
So when you say "we," I'm assuming-
We're the taxpayers.
The taxpayers, yeah, not the district, the taxpayers are paying.
Let's get that clear.
Yep.
$600 million for the bonds. Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. Action item 13.1, the 2024-2025 Board of Trustees Self-Evaluation, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.2, Approval of Resolution Number 2425-29 for the Board of Trustees Regarding Compensation for Absence. Member of the Board of Trustees, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.3, Approval of Resolution Number 2425/30, Authorization of GAN Appropriations Limits for '25, '26. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.4, Approval of Resolution Number 2425/31, Approving the Fiscal Year '25, '26 Education Protection Account EPA Spending Plan. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.5, Approval of the 2025, 2026 Tendentive Budget, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.5, Approval of the 2025, 2026 Tendentive Budget, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.6, Approval to Extend Contract with Keenan Associates for the Futurist Public Tendentive Investment Trust Program through June 30th, 2026. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, what is the amount for this contract?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
How much is that, how much will we pay for the contract?
In Exhibit A, a breakdown of the compensation is included. We've asked Keenan for that information, we can bring that back next time to show what it was, but the rate structure is included on page 13 of the attachment, but the actual dollar amount by year, I can bring that back for you.
That's off $83,000.
Sounds about right.
Yeah.
I'm-
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.7, Approval of Agreement and Addendum Number One to the Agreement for Legal Services Between F3 Law and Anl Valley Colleges, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.8, Approval of Academic Policies and Procedures, AP&amp;P, Committee's Recommendations of Course Listings for the Fall of 2025, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.9, Approval of Random Understanding between Palmville School District Early Childhood Education Program, Developing a Partnership, DAP, and Anl Valley Community College, ABC. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 13.10, Approval of United Farmworkers, UFW, Foundation, Community Colleges, Project, CCP, Advocacy Fellowship Campus Mentor Partnership Extension Agreement for the Fall of 2025 through Spring of 2026 Academic Year, may I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And we do have one card on that one.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having me, trustees, council members, and presidents. My name is Jesus Viscarra, and I was the previous fellow for the UF3 Foundation. I'm here to thank you, thank you genuinely, for approving the partnership with the United Farmworkers Foundation in the first place and allowing me to have or make such an incredible experience of being able to build my character, my person, and as a student, and becoming a part of this community, and I will talk about this in a bit, and I want to thank you for considering renewing the partnership once again to allow another fellow to be able to build such a great experience as well. You were, pretty sure, given a presentation made by me, talking about the foundation, the fellowship, and my experiences as the fellow. On the first slide, it talks about the foundation itself and its main goal. The community college, California Community College have partnered with the UF3 Foundation to be able to provide students, faculty, and staff with free immigration legal services and help with anything like DACA applications, family petitions, adjustment of status, visas, and anything of those sorts. Their main goal is to help empower students with the knowledge of the ever-changing laws and policies, constantly being in place for them, especially during times like these where so much is happening, people are afraid. The next slide talks about the fellowship itself and what to expect. The fellowship is a leadership opportunity for enrolled community college students, including undocumented AB 540 eligible dreamers such as myself. As a fellow, you are committed to completing 250 service hours during your academic year. Your focus is on outreach and awareness initiatives for immigration legal services and other resources. You do receive professional development training and guidance from both the UF3 Foundation staff and designated campus mentor, which in my case was the Dreamers Center's counselor, Ms. Kim Castillo, who genuinely helped me with this journey to be able to do as much as I can. On the last slide, it talks about my experiences as the fellow. As a fellow, I was the representative here at ABC, and I was responsible for outreach to our community about the services, making sure they know this exists because there are students who come and don't know throughout their whole college experience that there's services out there to help benefit them. I was responsible for tabling campus events, supporting the UFW throughout their, their own events, handing, handing out flyers, presenting to classes, making sure students alike as teachers knew that there's something out there for them, and meeting with students who had any further questions about the foundation, and making sure they knew how to make appointments if needed. And throughout this journey, I do feel like I made an impact, and I, I like to think that I was able to spread awareness and help others who were going through similar experiences as me, or if not the same. I learned that I can make a difference, even if it's just spreading the word. An example of this being when I was able, allowed to present during one of our undocumented allied trainings that was held here on campus through Zoom, where we invited counselors from high schools around our area and including our staff and faculty to be able to learn better how to support undocumented students throughout their journey and be there for them. Thought that to say, thank you so much for having me, and thank you again for approving that partnership and thinking about it again. Thank you so much.
Thank you. A pleasure to have you here.
Any questions?
Excellent presentation, thank you very much. We're back on 1310, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 1311, Approval of Independent Contractor Agreements Between Vincent Bennett and Anl Valley College for Oversight of the Paramedic Program. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, President Zelik, how long has this program been in existence, the paramedic program, you know?
Paramedic program is a new program, and we're, we're implementing it. I believe we, we are in our second year of implementation.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 1312, Approval of Independent Contract Between William Russell Barrett, EBA, Barrett EMS Consulting LLC, and Anl Valley College for Paramedic Program. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 1313, Approval of Affiliation Agreement Between American Medical Responder Southern California and Anl Valley Community College District, Licensing Certification Requirements. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 1314, Approval of Amendment Number Five to Professional Services Agreement Between AV Summit Medical Group and Anl Valley College for In-Person Medical Care for Students through June 30th, 2026. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, President Zelik, I thought we were gonna have a health center on campus. When is that expected?
We, we do have a health center, and last month, the board approved our outsourcing of that to a company that will run the whole medical center, and in the meantime, we, while we've been finding the, the right company to work with, we've been using this agreement to make sure that our students have access to medical care.
So it eventually will be a permanent site on campus somewhere in one of those-
Yes, sir, in, in the Student Health Center, that's in the Student Center Building, the brand-new Student Center Building, there's a health center in there, we have a company that's coming in to run that center for us.
So we won't be outsourcing like we have in the past?
Well, we, we have a contract with them, which is technically outsourcing, but this contracts like this, you won't see so many of because we have a major contract with them.
So they have a, like apparel, you know-
They'll have a, they'll have nurses on campus, they'll be able to give inoculations, immunizations, they can take your temperature, they could do a lot of things that nurses and, and doctors do, so it's, it'll be a full set of medical care.
Will the students have to pay?
They already pay a health fee, and it's paid for out of that, they don't have to pay anything else on top of the health fee they're currently paying.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 1315, Approval of Amendment Number Four to the Professional Services Agreement with Valleywide Dental Corporation through June 30th, 2026. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 1316, Approval to Extend the Use of the Foundation for California Community Colleges Master Agreement with Lerdahl Medical Corporation for Medical-Related Purchases. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 1317, Approval of Agreement Between Financial Aid Services LLC, Consulting Services Agreement, and Anl Valley Community College District for Return of Title IV Funds, R204, Involving Services. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. 1318, Approval of District's Five-Year Construction Plan. May I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Okay, I took the liberty of printing this out.
Sir, can you make sure your microphone is on so that, thank you, the interpreters need to hear-
I took the liberty of printing out our five-year construction plan. It's very detailed, I don't know if any of the other board members have looked at it, but I would like us to postpone and have some discussion about this and bring it up into July meeting, if that's possible, because this is a lot of stuff in here and a lot of money. It has to do with bond measures and everything, so I thought the board would like to go into detail about this, not just vote, and if I hadn't printed this out, I wouldn't have a copy and know what it's all about. So what do you guys think?
Isn't this a requirement?
It is, and it's related to the facility service plan that the board passed, I believe, two meetings ago.
This doesn't commit us to doing anything with it. We could change it, alter it, et cetera, right?
Yeah, and it's a report we submit annually, so every year, we're submitting an updated five-year construction plan. Basically, we talk about the future needs of the campus, and we also report on our current space inventory.
Well, you're asking approval of a five-year, approval, you know, and we haven't even looked at the thing and discussed it.
We discussed the specifics two months ago, right?
This is the first time you're seeing this five-year construction plan, but this, an updated five-year construction planning, it goes, it comes to you every year, and so...
And then this goes to the chancellor's office?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
This includes everything from maintenance to new, it's anything that we're gonna be doing to our facilities over the next-
Yeah.
Well, you know, it's difficult to approve something you haven't talked about in detail, especially when it has to do with all this, hundreds of millions of dollars. And it's also in here, one of the projects is student housing, that's contingent on a grant from the state, well, the state bankrupt, so you can forget that, so-
It doesn't, this report doesn't commit us to anything, right? It doesn't commit us to any of those projects listed there. What they want us to do is to be thinking outwards for five years, and what this does is it documents that we are looking forward to our future facility needs or capital improvement needs.
That's very true, but when you think about your future, you talk about it and discuss it and modify it before you move forward. I, I just think this should be postponed and discussed at the next closed session of the board.
There is a requirement that it be submitted to the chancellor's office by July 1st. What I can commit to the board is in the future, you will not get it in June, you will get it earlier, giving sufficient time to discuss-
Well, this is the precursor to a couple hundred million dollar bond you're gonna try to get passed next year, that's what this is all about.
Actually, I, I don't believe that's correct, Michael. It's not a precursor for the bond, it's simply a requirement of chancellor's office, you send it up. Now, if the state were to, for example, pass a state bond-
Right.
-for education, then I turn around to Anl Valley College and other colleges, we have a lot of money, you can have 50 or 60 million, then you can go back and look at your projects list and say, we can take something off there to do it. That's why you do it, it's just, it doesn't commit you to anything, so why does it matter? To be quite honest.
Well, I hope that is reflected in the minutes, that we're not bound to this document.
We've never been bound to anything.
That is, that is correct, that is my understanding as well. We are not bound to the plans that we put here for the future needs, but trustee Buffalo is correct, if, if there is an award in the future, the projects that we've listed here can be considered by the state to give us funding.
But as you proceed on these projects, there's about five major projects in here, I hope that we'll have a staff report, ample discussion of each project.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. Thirteen nineteen. Approval of award bid number ABC, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, dash three, for copier maintenance services. May your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. Thirteen twenty. Approval to award bid ABC, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, dash five, for hazardous waste removal services. May your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. Thirteen twenty-one. Approval to extend the use of the foundation for California Community Colleges Master Services Agreement with Waxies Enterprises LLC for custodial supplies and equipment. May your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes with four yes votes. With the board's indulgence, I'd like to include thirteen twenty-two and thirteen twenty-three together, as they both deal with COVID-blocked rent funds. May your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. With the board's indulgence, I'd like to include thirteen twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, because they all deal with scheduled maintenance funds. May your motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. Thirteen twenty-eight. Approval of change order for Cedar Hall Project, number eighteen dash zero two one, with major AV funds. May your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes with four yes votes. Fourteen one is information items dealing with district child development center self-evaluation. We'll move on to reports and announcements. Academic Senate, Mr. Huntsman.
Good evening, trustees, President Zelik, Mr. Taylor, Ms. Schottelkorb, Ms. McClure. Before I get started, I do want to say thank you, President Adams, for giving me a little extra time today. I was anticipating a few different issues that I need to discuss with you. I also want to say thank you, trustee Reeves. I do approve of the idea of a open hearing on the budget. I would love that, and I think most faculty would. And lastly, before I really get started, I want to mention how proud I am of Jesus Fiskara, the young man who spoke to you just a little bit ago. He is a Pointe student that I know well, and he just graduated. You may remember him walking across the stage. He's just, I'm just so proud of him, so I just wanted to say that. The academic senate passed a resolution, which I want to read to you, at our last meeting in May. We did not anticipate the current events, which I think bring this resolution even more to the forefront, but let me read the resolution. Resolution of the academic senate of Antelope Valley College Community College District, declaring support for the formation of a mutual academic defense compact. Whereas recent executive orders and legislative proposals at the federal and state levels and decisions made at the local district level threaten the academic and professional integrity of public institutions of higher education by seeking to limit academic freedom, restrict curriculum content, eliminate guaranteed faculty rights, and impose undue political influence over faculty governance and institutional policy. And whereas the California Community Colleges system serves over 1.8 million students and is governed through a model of participatory governance grounded in Title V, Section 53200, quote, "ten plus one," academic and professional matters, including curriculum, academic standards, and policies for faculty roles and institutional governance. And whereas an infringement on the academic integrity, autonomy, or governance processes of one college presents a threat to all colleges and undermines the collective mission to serve California's diverse student population equitably. And whereas academic senates and boards of trustees share a responsibility to uphold the mission of the California Community Colleges system by safeguarding educational quality, institutional independence, and the rights of faculty and students to teach, learn, and engage in open inquiry. Therefore, resolved that the Antelope Valley College Academic Senate affirms its commitment to academic freedom, faculty primacy in curriculum and governance under Title V, and the collective defense of these principles across the California Community Colleges system. And resolved that the Antelope Valley College Academic Senate calls upon the Antelope Valley Community College District Board of Trustees to endorse and participate actively in the formation of a mutual academic defense compact, pledging collaboration with faculty leaders across the state to uphold the values of academic freedom, shared governance, and institutional For me, these days, and resolutions like that, make me want to be working with a strong team. And right now, I want to really acknowledge a team of my outgoing officers, one of whom you heard speak tonight, our outgoing vice president of our senate is Mesa Nicholas. I'm really also proud of her and the growth that I've seen her come forward in the last year alone, and I was very happy to hear, see her speak so forcefully this evening. Also, Nari Kaseforth, who's not here, and I don't think has spoken to the board, but she has been an invaluable source of information and advice for me. And Dr. Jason Bowen, who is our outgoing second executive officer, has also been instrumental in many policies that the senate has been considering. I'm really grateful for them as outgoing officers this year, and I am pleased to let you know about our new officers for the upcoming year. Our vice president will be David Adams in business. Our second exec, first executive officer will be Nari Kaseforth, coming back again, good to have a little continuity, and she's in language and communication arts. And then Dr. Mark McGovern will be first executive officer, sorry, second executive officer, and he's returning to the senate after a little hiatus, and we're very glad to have him back. Very looking, very much looking forward to working with the new team. And speaking of Dr. McGovern, he is the faculty member that I want to highlight this month because I don't know if you've ever been to our planetarium, but if you have, you've probably heard him speak. And I can tell you that he does an unbelievable amount of outreach here in the community with elementary, middle, and high school students and in the planetarium and through just general astronomy events. He also, in addition to now being our new second executive officer, has been serving as the legislative liaison and the constitutional referee for the senate. Those are roles he will be giving up because of his new role, but we're, he continued to serve the senate. He does so many things on campus, and he really is the most important person in making the planetarium run in terms of the presentation. The physical plant, I don't know about, there's probably someone else who I don't know and probably should know, who is responsible for that, but in terms of doing the presentations, he's the guy. He helps put the community and community colleges. He's a great representative of our college, and I am really glad to put his name forward to you. Lastly, this evening, I do want to acknowledge one more person, and that would be Patty McClure. This is Patty's last meeting as a member of our college, I think, and I just want to express our gratitude to you. We will not be the same without you, and, you know, I don't even, I don't even have words. There's, so many faculty have spoken to me about the great work that you've done and how much we're going to miss you that I, yeah, that's all I can say. Thank you, thank you, Patty. And I do want to say, Michelle, welcome, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you, trustees.
Antelope Valley Federation of Teachers, Dr. Jason Bowen.
I will miss Patty tremendously. My heart is broken. She's irreplaceable and a once-in-a-generation talent. Michelle Schottelkorb will be an inspiration and a once-in-a-generation talent also. I had my first day of class today. I teach physics. The class I'm teaching this summer is Physics One Ten Mechanics. It's a blast. One of the greatest joys of my life is teaching students. I've had today a full class. All twenty-four students enrolled showed up, plus fifteen students who were standing trying to add the class. So we're trying to accommodate them, and there's some options that may work out very well for those students. Unfortunately, I had to tell them that next week I will not be available, I have to find a substitute, so it's possible that if I don't find a substitute, that classes will have to be canceled the entire next week, and the reason is because I, being subpoenaed for an OAH hearing regarding a faculty member who was terminated unlawfully, her CBA rights were violated, Title V Education Code, and the board's own policy were violated in her termination. I have to go to another OAH hearing in July, and then another one in October. This one is regarding an issue that it's severe, not as severe as the prior. So it's one of these matters where we do what we have to do to ensure that rights are respected and men and women have the opportunity to tell their side of the story, which is a bedrock, right, in any democracy. However, it turns out that we might have, I might have to be at another OAH hearing related to the same individual because he was given a notice of termination, which makes no sense, given his circumstances, and the primary argument in that situation is that he went on leave but was working at a different employer, and in the notice, the justification is an email given to him by the district saying he's not allowed to work, but that only purely applies to ABC-related work. It's completely preposterous. So with that said, I'd like to address trustee Reeves' recent comments. I appreciate it when the board engages the public, me in particular, and makes comments because it's a back-and-forth dialogue that's important to make progress in any democracy. So I'm just, I'm going to comment on the following. So I'd like to address trustee Reeves' recent comments suggesting that the district hired outside law firms because the faculty union has become litigious. Let's be very clear about something. We have not historically faced these types of issues until the district itself began to routinely bypass required processes outlining our agreements and in state law. Initially, when problems arose, our faculty union genuinely attempted to resolve these issues internally by filing grievances. We trusted our internal processes and made every effort to utilize them. However, I soon learned that our efforts were not being taken seriously. In fact, rather than addressing our legitimate concerns, I discovered from a source, that's credible, that our attempts were being openly ridiculed behind closed doors. There goes Jason again, filing another grievance. How many has he filed this year? Is it number twenty? Given this reality, we were left with no alternative but to seek external remedies to curb. It's important to emphasize that the union does not pursue legal avenues lightly or without substantial cause. These actions become necessary only after our good faith internal efforts were ignored or dismissed outright. The litigation trustee Reeves refers to isn't a reflection of our desire for conflict, rather it's a direct result of the district's repeated decisions to circumvent established procedures and undermine the trust and collaborative relationships we once shared, as Pam shared earlier. If the district genuinely wishes to avoid further legal disputes and redirect wasted revenue and taxpayer dollars toward genuine student needs, the solution is straightforward. Respect our collective bargaining agreement, honor the processes we've mutually agreed upon, and engage in sincere, meaningful dialogue. Only then can we truly move forward together, investing our collective energies and resources where they matter most, our students. And I'd like to end with the following, it just occurred to me. Why is there an attorney seated at the dais? Has that ever been a practice at this college? My concern is the effect this has on the tone of the meeting. This is the public meetings, too. It introduces a sense of adversarialism that doesn't belong in a space meant for public service and shared governance. It communicates to the public, we've lawyered up. The public doesn't walk in with attorneys. If there's a reason for it, I think the Antelope Valley community deserves to understand why we have someone who's not an elected official, not an employee of the college, someone who's contracted. Thank you.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Pamela Ford.
Board members, President Zelis, Zelik, Patty, I'm going to miss you. I have enjoyed working with you, and it doesn't seem what the obstacle, we managed to get through it. Michelle, I welcome you. I think you're going to do a great job. This is a fantastic opportunity, and your positivity is going to bring a lot to fill, not fill her shoes, but begin to make your own pathway. I stand in solidarity with David Werthe, SEIE president, who was arrested in the rally in LA. And I also stand in solidarity with the speakers this evening, and I appreciate the faculty speaking up about issues in the hub. I'm not sure what's happening, but it's come to my attention that there's lots of instability and moving of classified duties around, managers being intemperate towards employees, which is a growing trend across student services, and I hope the district will look into this. And Joseph Holt, thank you so much for your comments. This situation we have been dealing with and battling and trying to get a resolution, so, is it Jason? Joseph? Okay, well, thank you, and I'll be talking to you. I really appreciate that. Ms. Gaines, your comments at the last boarding, board meeting were misguided. The statement I read was from an employee. Your reaction more than validated why the employee chose to remain anonymous, for the employee wanted to avoid the reaction and venom you spewed at me in your closing comments. Now, you strongly addressed that the F in facts, in a frisk, stands for facts. And facts, you're right, is an issue. It's a longstanding issue for the past two or three years. And here's an example. I got this email from PCT, and I was told that there was an employee who made a serious error, but PCT was looking at moving this employee into another position so that they could work where their skills would be more appropriate. I was thrilled. I thanked PCT for trying to resolve an employee issue in a positive way instead of terminating an employee. But then, I spoke to my team and I spoke to my legal counsel, and they said, you probably want to send a request for information to really determine what's going on. So I did, and because I was so caught up in the glory and the goodness of it, it wasn't the main thing for me. I was just happy that a resolution was coming in a positive way. But imagine my surprise when I find out that within the body of the response, I was told that they were going to place this employee in another employee's position, so they were going to do a swap, which is not in our contract, which would be a unilateral change from our contract. So I reached out to the employee who was going to be receiving this swap. I was also told that the employee that made the error wasn't told that this swap was even taking place. So, but it was to avoid disciplinary action, so that's why I was all in. So, but when I spoke with the employee, I was told that they really didn't want to do it, but they felt pressured that they were going to have to do it. And I'm not naming any names or departments. And I'm not naming any names or departments. So I reached out to PCT, and I shared with them that swapping or exchanging positions is not in the collective bargaining agreement, and the employee has declined this opportunity to swap. I thought it was resolved. That would be the end of it. Then I received this email from PCT, and this email broke my heart. It says, "It is unfortunate that neither of the ladies," I'm saying ladies because I'm not naming names, "were willing to support the department. As you and I discussed when we agreed to move all in that position to report through one department, having a centralized team across, to cross-train and support the institution as a whole was part of the vision. As we were unable to achieve that vision in this situation, the district will be moving forward with discipline for the employee as we were unable to secure a transfer." Now, this response was wrong for a whole host of reasons. I learned in this email that there was another employee approached as well to swap after I had told the district that that was not a part of the contract. Those two employees should not have been characterized as not being supportive and depicting them in a negative way for an illegal, non-contractual swap, which was not a transfer. And I have to tell you, one of the employees that was approached is a longstanding, dedicated, loyal district employee who supports the district in every way possible. If I make one mistake, she's all over me. And she has been so helpful to the district. I was shocked to even see these words spoken about her. And the employee that made the mistake should not have been disciplined because the duty was not in his job description, which was something else I learned, and because there was no swap. So you're gonna discipline this person because the other people wouldn't swap for him. And get this, the employee has been asking for training. And when I met with the employee and the supervisor, the supervisor admitted the training was never given. But I'll sure see to it. The federation's vision was to have everyone properly trained, not to cross-train and not to be a part of discipline. Now, you get frustrated and speak to me loudly and disrespectfully because I uphold my responsibility of representing my constituent group. I am consistent in calling out anything that may harm them. As union president, I support the mission and business of the college and uphold employees' rights. Attacking me by yourselves, by using administrators, managers, and employees to attack me for being unmovable and unshakable in my convictions, irrespective of the daily blows and hatred I experience, it's almost as if you want to delete the good work accomplished. And there are some things that the district and the unions accomplish together. And the progress employees, that all this work is being done for, received. And it looks like the only alternative is to lash out or become disagreeable. I'm wrapping, I'm wrapping. At the end of the day, the federation works hard to seek resolutions. And frisk stands for facts, rules, impact, suggestions, knowledge. The federation suggestion would be the district gain knowledge of the CBA, follow the rules, and use facts to seek positive resolutions to elicit positive impact. Thank you.
Confidential management, supervisory administrator, employees, Ashley Hawkins.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zealot, Patty and Michelle, and colleagues and community members. As we begin the summer semester, the campus is filled with renewed energy and optimism. At the same time, we cannot ignore the broader context in which our work takes place. The recent immigration enforcement actions occurring in Los Angeles have created real fear and disruption for many in our community, impacting students, staff, faculty, and their families. While the circumstances are complex, the human impact is undeniable. And as a college committed to access equity and student success, we continue to be a place of safety, compassion, and support for all who come through our doors. And yet, in the midst of all of this, we gathered this morning to raise the pride flag, standing in solidarity and celebration of our LGBTQIA+ students and colleagues. What followed was a meaningful moment of connection and dialogue in the hub with members of the executive team, administrators, faculty, staff, and students, joining together in reflection and community. These are the moments who define who we are, not just as individuals but as a college district. I also want to share some updates from CMSA. We recently held our board elections, and I want to take a moment to sincerely thank our outgoing board members for their service. Ron Bannonetti served as our treasurer, Cassandra Trice, our supervisory representative, and Sherry Burkholder was our confidential representative. We want to thank them for their time, leadership, and many contributions they made on behalf of CMSA. I am honored to have been reelected as chair, and Mike Darby was also reelected as secretary. We also welcome our new board members. Van Rider will be serving as treasurer, Angela Urbanowski, the confidential representative, Alberto Mendoza Gonzalez Larinaga will be the management representative, Rosio Heasley, the supervisory representative, and Catherine Mitchell will be the administrative representative. We are honored to represent our colleagues in CMSA and remain committed to supporting our students, strengthening our institution, and uplifting our community through equity, service, and advocacy. We also want to take a moment to say farewell to Patty, whose retirement leaves some very big shoes to fill. Thank you, Patty, for your many years of service, for your steady coordination of the office of multiple presidents, and for managing so gracefully all of us. You will be deeply missed, and we wish you the best in your next chapter. Finally, congratulations to Michelle Schottelkorb as she steps into her new role. As a fellow Army veteran and a community college success story, Michelle brings a fierce commitment to students and a reputation for simply getting things done. We want to welcome you to CMSA, and we're so excited to support you as you take on this important work. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Associated Student Organization, Destiny Warner.
Good evening, trustees, President Zealot, and guests. My report will be brief, starting with the ASO financial recap. For the 2024-25 fiscal year, ASO has awarded $32,000 in ASO emergency grants. ASO has awarded a club grant to the Film Production Club for their trip to Paramount Studios in Hollywood for a VIP studio tour. ASO also donated $1,500 to the first-year and second-year experience towards their coffee station. Moving on to ASO events. ASO will be having our yearly transitional dinner this Wednesday on June 11, 2025, à La Papillon in Lancaster, where the previous cabinet and new cabinet will get to sit and share keynotes and advice for the new school year. ASO will be having their first 2025-2026 meeting on July 11, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in the boardroom here at Cedar Hall. Thank you, President Zealot. The new ASO cabinet will be having a Brown Act and parliamentary training on July 1, 16, and 17. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Antelope Valley College Foundation, Diane Kniggle. Thank you. Office of Superintendent President, Dr. Zealot.
Thank you, everyone. I just want to say, Destiny, great job on your first report. Good job. I also want to remind the public that the district will never debate or litigate personnel matters in public. We respect our employees and their right to privacy, and we will not respond to anything that you hear from the dais or the pulpit. I apologize. Good evening, trustees and student trustee. Today marks the opening day of Summer Session 2025. We began the day with raising the pride flag and having a listening session in the hub. It was a wonderful event with our employees and students. During that event, we were all mindful of the events in Los Angeles and the heightened tensions. Communications were sent to the campus today to encourage a grace period for students on the first day of Summer Session, in case some of our students were wary of taking public transportation or leaving their homes. These times require us to think broadly about our service to students and employees who may be vulnerable. Student success hinges on a sense of belonging, and we want our students to know that you belong at ABC. Enrollment for Summer 2024 started a year ago at 12,281, and this year we are starting at 13,011. Our upward trend continues, and while this is a modest 0.9% increase, we expect summer to be smaller than primary terms. Looking ahead to Fall 2025, we are excited to see that even though enrollment began a full 25 days later than last year, we are nearly even with last year's enrollments to this date. This bodes well for the institution meeting the board's strategic priorities around 10% growth in enrollments and FTEs. Special thanks to all in Student Services, who are getting students enrolled, getting their ed plans, and into the classes. A week ago Friday, ABC held its 95th commencement ceremony. It was a warm but festive event, and it could not have happened without the planning and efforts of many amazing people. Officially, here are the numbers, at least as of today. There were 1,035 graduates RSVPing to go to the ceremony. 855 officially checked in. Some showed up late and were just allowed through without going through the official check-in, which was great. We had 3,577 guests in a stadium that approximately seats 4,000, so we were really getting right close to capacity. We had 105 faculty, not including the people who were the field marshals. We had 61 classified professionals who were helping. Thirty-one of the staff were from the events team. So, so many thanks to all who were passing out waters, helping folks find their seats, find their people, and all of the things that have to happen for graduation to be an amazing success. I want to give a special thanks to Dean Leo Ayala for leading the planning team. Thanks to Christian Hoopman for the emergency help and running interference with the fire marshal, to James Nazapack and the events team, to our marketing team for the photos and videos, and to our campus safety officers and the cadets. This event would not happen without the Herculean efforts of everyone. Tonight, I want to welcome Ms. Michelle Schottelkorb to the dais as the new Director of Board and Executive Services, Strategic Initiatives, and Government Relations. This marks a significant passing of the torch in the president's office, arguably a more significant passing of the torch than if you were hiring a new president. Ms. Patty McClure served the district well for ten years, and tonight is her last official board meeting. I can't thank Patty enough for the assistance that she has given me. She was my official onboarding as a new president. The past three years would not have been all that they have been for me without her assistance. Her detail, humor, compassion, and caring will be greatly missed. But we send her away with all of the blessings that someone who is retiring deserves. And we would like to let everyone know that following, we will be having cake to share. If you can stick around for a few minutes after, there's a little bit of cake, there's some flowers, there's all of the wonderful things that we do. We want to send somebody away with lots of love. So thank you, Patty. Thank you to the college. Thank you to our students. Thank you to our students who are here at the board meeting. I love looking out and seeing students here. This is wonderful. Thank you for being here. Thank you, trustees. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. More of your comments, Mr. Reeves.
I want to welcome Michelle to the board. Welcome, Michelle. You know, when I go out with someone, whether it's a date or a meeting, the highest compliment that I can pay to them at the termination of the meeting or the date is I say to them, "Thank you for the pleasure of your company." And that's what I say to you, Patty. Thank you for the pleasure of the company.
I happen to have been on the panel, I suppose is the best way to put it, that hired Patty many years ago. I didn't know Patty was, Patty and I at that time worked at the same district. And when I, I didn't know Patty was interviewing, and when Patty walked into the room, I became very nervous because I was fearful that the people in that district, if Patty were selected, were going to hurt me in some way or flatten my tires or something. I didn't know what they would do. But there she is, ten years later. And I knew it then, and I'll say it now, I knew it was probably a very, very smart move on the college's part to select Patty. And I'm not so sure retirement's all that, Patty, but I don't know. I've seen a lot of people fail at it miserably. Just letting you know upfront. I do wish you the very best with your family and all the ventures you have planned. I know it's been a long time coming for you, and so I just want to say that. And to Michelle, Michelle, don't feel down a little bit tonight. We do welcome you. And being on that panel that's where you were selected, I'm very, very excited to welcome you. And I feel you'll be, you'll just do a great job serving the community college first and foremost, and Dr. Zealot, and the board. So I want to wish you the very best. The last thing I want to say is I've had a few parents come to me in the past week, and I don't know how much of this is valid, but I know that Vice President Bakit, and she will look into this. I was told that, for example, there are many incidents where lectures and labs are scheduled at the same time. I'm gonna use, for example, biology. We know that biology, if you take lecture, you've got a complete lab. And I'm hearing that the kids are having a hard time enrolling in both because in the schedule that they are at the same time. You might just want to look into it. I thought it was a little far-fetched, but I've had more than one person tell me that. So if you could look into that, I would really appreciate it because, again, we're here to serve students and increase our enrollment, and it's hard for us to do that. And last, at the graduation ceremony, there was a time when Mr. Huntsman was handing me diploma jackets to give to our students. And I kept noticing that all of these students were just like so excited to see him. And I said, "Oh." And finally, he said, "Oh, those are some of my calculus students." And I was like, "Really? They're that excited to still see you?" It was like, "I'm dying to enroll in calculus, but then I'm afraid I'll ruin my GPA that I have existing somewhere in the, you know, the arcades here." But it's like, "Really?" It was like a bunch of them. I was like, "Wow, this is really odd." I mean, I've sat and observed a calculus teacher in my high school district, and it's scary to me what I see him writing on the board. So I just wanted to say, Mr. Huntsman, kudos to you. You built some relationship with a lot of your students, and it was beautiful to see. Thank you.
I just talked to some people at the Palmdale Still District, and they're still angry with you over Patty.
They are?
Yes.
You had to say that, huh?
Yeah, I did. I just told them I'd bring that out. Patty, thank you. I have no words. You've been amazing. Michelle, welcome aboard. I look forward to seeing you direct all the carts at graduation next year. Multiple carts, by the way, which Patty is an expert at. I don't know if she can drive them, but she can direct them. Anyway, we've started the school year, right, Summer Session, and I want you to know that my granddaughter, who graduated from Quartz Hill, and she's been going here for the past year taking classes, and while she still went to Quartz Hill. And so she got up this morning at 5:00 a.m. to be here at 6:15 so she could start volleyball practice. That's dedication. I would think that if I was a coach, I'd think 10 o'clock would be I would think that if I was a coach, I'd think 10 o'clock would be good. Not early in the morning, no. So anyway, I think we are moving forward, and hopefully, we're gonna have a very good summer and a great fall. And, Mike, it's all yours.
Knowing Patty's sense of humor, I keep thinking this is some elaborate practical joke. And probably will continue to think that until June 30. But Patty, you've made us board members our jobs much easier. And that's and that's the most we can ask for is is you make our jobs easier, you make it a pleasant evening for us to come in. And I can't thank you enough for all you've done for us for the last 10 years. It's been incredible. And Michelle, big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you're up to it. Thank you. There are no reasons to go back into closed session. Our next meeting date is July 14, 2025, and we are adjourned.